Good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Durant and I'm the chairperson of the Human Relations Commission. Welcome to the October 23 meeting and I will officially call the meeting to order. Now, I would ask Carlin Duncan, the HRC secretary, to do the roll call.
Commissioner Durant.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Commissioner Bloomfield has requested an excused absent. Commissioner Clinton.
Present.
Commissioner Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Haines has requested an excused absent. Commissioner Sartain.
Present.
Commissioner Saupaul has requested an excused absent. Commissioner Somara has requested an excused absent. Commissioner Valdez has also requested an excused absent. And Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Okay, now that we've completed the roll call, I ask for a vote from the commission to approve the excused absence requests.
Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved. Okay, so now I request from the commission, you have your packets with the minutes. If you would please take a moment to review them, if you haven't already done so, and then I will request a motion to approve the minutes.
So, you're making a motion? Yeah, making a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved from the previous meeting. So, tonight's meeting is a special meeting where we are actually having an ADA hearing as part of the meeting, so we have a little bit of a different format. So, tonight, we will have a meeting agenda that is comprised of a general agenda and also a consent agenda. So, if any commissioners would like to move any of the items from the consent agenda to the general agenda, if you would please indicate so now, we would appreciate it.
Yes, item 2E, under the committee reports.
Very good. So, item 2E, committee reports, the New Horizons Fair Housing report. And in addition, I just wanted to note, item 1B on the agenda, we are proposing a date change for the November HRC meeting to November 15.
Commissioner Wiggins had a comment?
Item A can be moved as well. Item A?
Item A?
To A.
Community relations. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins.
You're welcome.
Okay, now that we have moved a few of the items from the consent agenda, item 1B, item 2A, and item 2E to the general agenda, I request a motion to officially move these from the consent agenda to the general agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now, we will proceed to item 1B, which is the November HRC meeting schedule. We are proposing a date change to November 15, and I wanted to request of the commission a motion to approve this meeting date change.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, we will move to item 2A, the committee report for the Community Relations Committee. Commissioner Wiggins?
One of the things I wanted to talk about was when the Juneteenth wrap-up, I was able to meet with them to discuss what that event looked like. They had an overwhelming response and attendance for that event. We will continue to meet again and to plan for the next year, looking at the venue change. But overall, it was a very well-attended event and the meeting has been successful to this day.
That's great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wiggins? Any additional updates? Okay, we'll move on to item 2E, the New Horizons Fair Housing Committee.
Correct. I wanted to touch bases real quick tonight. The New Horizon Fair Housing Committee will be putting together, we've already put together, but we'll be holding a mini faces of gentrification on November the 14th at the Embassy Suites, I'm sorry, from 9:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. in regards to gentrification, but also dialogue and conversation. I think this will be a transparent dialogue, not just for the institution, but for residents here in Winston-Salem, because we know gentrification has been a hot button issue here in Winston-Salem. So, this will be a time for individuals to come out and also to be able to understand what gentrification means, the pros and the cons of it, of itself. So, again, that will be held on November the 14th from 9:30 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. And as well, the Fair Housing, New Horizon Fair Housing, I'm sorry, New Horizon Fair Housing Committee is still meeting on a monthly basis until we complete our gentrification symposium. But as well, we will take a sabbatical until January in 2019, then we will begin our Fair Housing luncheon. So, that's the update I wanted to give.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee, Vice Chair Lee. So, at this point, we've finished this portion of the general agenda, and I want to move to the consent agenda.
Commissioner Durant, I think that you wanted to make a motion for the consent agenda, the remainder of the consent agenda to be approved?
That is correct. Thank you. So, at this point, commissioners, I ask that someone make a motion, if you are in agreement, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So now, we will officially move to the ADA portion of the hearing. So, welcome to all of you who are here in attendance of the commission's second ADA Public Input Session this year. The purpose of this session is to receive input regarding the accessibility of services and programs provided by the city of Winston-Salem, as well as city facilities, as part of the city's efforts to develop a new self-evaluation and transition plan under the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 as amended. Your input will be incorporated into the city's self-evaluation process and, where appropriate, the city's transition plan, which will be made available for the public. The self-evaluation and transition plan will serve as the basis for any recommendations to the Winston-Salem City Council for any service and program changes and enhancement to city facilities. As an update, since the last ADA input session, the city has updated its ADA surveys and ADA complaint form so that they can be completed and submitted online. The documents are available on the city's website at www.cityofws.org. Click Accessibility, which will take you to the city's webpage, and this contains the surveys and complaint form. Please keep in mind that the information sought is limited to the services and programs provided by the city of Winston-Salem and its facilities. Assisting the commission with this input session tonight will be Angela Carmen, who is one of the city's ADA city coordinators. There are also additional city staff here tonight as well to assist with the information gathering process. We will try and make sure that everyone here has an opportunity to provide comments, and I would now ask the first speaker to come to the podium. We are recommending a three-minute interval.
Thank you. Chair Durant, I just wanted to mention, to just remind everyone that this session is being recorded by WSTV 13. Their cameras are around the room, and so for those who may have a need to reference the video, it would be made available to them upon request.
Thank you very much.
And also, we do have interpreters here, although we may not have anyone in the audience, it would be helpful for someone reviewing it later on to take advantage of that service.
Great. Thank you. So, we invite you now.
Please feel free to come forward and provide input regarding city services, city facilities, in regards to whether or not they're accessible and what can be done to make them more accessible. So, your input is welcome. This is for you all. Don't be shy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samuel Gavron, and I am the alternate chairman for the Homeless Caucus here in Winston-Salem. I wanted to know what kind, what, if any, is going to be done as far as amendments are concerned for the homeless as far as physical disabilities? Say, for example, if there is a homeless veteran who is in a wheelchair, and what services will be provided for those who are disabled with the addition of being homeless? And I just want to know, is, are we specifically discussing here physical disabilities, or are we also incorporating cognitive disabilities? Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to answer that question, Chairman Durant. The purpose of the forum is to receive comments from all persons, regardless of the nature of the disability, so it's both cognitive, physical, mental, all types of disabilities. And if you have any suggestions in terms of the type of services that perhaps the city could provide to make the quality of life better for homeless veterans, certainly you're welcome to provide that information as well. This is basically an information gathering process, so please feel free to make any suggestions you might have.
Thank you.
My name is Kristin O'Leary, and I thought I was meeting somebody here who does have a brother in the community who has severe mental illness, and she's having a really hard time finding placement for him. He, his doctor, his mental health doctor, keeps taking him off of his medicine. She has brought him into her home because there hasn't been anywhere for him to go, and she would like to find placement for him where she can feel safe, knowing that he isn't being taken advantage of, but he is still, somebody is making sure that his daily needs are being met and that he's safe and that he has a payee for his monies and that sort of thing. For the last 12 years, I have been working for the YWCA. I'm no longer with the Y. I'm a free agent at this time. But I have experienced, I worked with women with substance abuse disorders that were duly diagnosed with mental illness, and I also worked with women in the jail doing prison ministry, and 90% of the clients in there also had a mental illness. What I believe our problem is, is that we don't have enough follow-up. For example, I've been working for a nonprofit agency, and what goes on in the nonprofit agency, basically, the employees, as myself, I had nowhere to go if I felt like there was something being done wrong or not being done at all. There's nobody that oversees our nonprofits. So, these nonprofits in the community technically can do what they want with their population, and who's going to do anything about what's happening? What do we have in place for these agencies that are getting city funding, that are getting funding from the state? They're state-licensed agencies, but what are we doing to follow up to make sure that we're providing a good service for these people as a community? I have found several of my clients that had a severe mental illness that were easier to work with and manage than the rest of my clients were. They just needed some guidance. They needed to know that there was somebody there to give them some instructions that was not trying to give them instructions that were going to harm them. It's easy as, "I need you to go get on bus number 30, take it to CVS, pick up your prescriptions, bring them back to me, and we'll go through them together." Those are simple, basic instructions, but if there's not somebody that gives a heck about what their outcome is, then they might tell them something that's totally off the wall, and they don't know any of the like. They don't know what is, some of them wouldn't know whether I'm telling them to do something that is in their favor or not. So, there's a lot of people that we have in our community that don't have a family member that is overseeing their everyday living. So, I do believe that we have a big problem in our follow-through. We have agencies, we have services. I've taken clients to Monarch and sat there all day long because there's only one doctor in the building, and he can only do so much. He can only see so many people, you know, in a day's work, and we have a lot of people that need mental health. And I do the homeless count twice a year, and I have found several people on the homeless count that have told me they need very simple, basic things. I had a young man say, "I'm waiting on my disability, but in order to have my disability, I have to have an address, I have to have a computer so I could check off the certain things they need me to check off, and I don't have either one of those things, an address or a computer." I mean, even if we found a way, like they used to do with, I don't know if it was food stamps, they would have a little mailbox where they could come and pick up their stuff, if we had somewhere in our city where they didn't have to pay for a P.O. box where they could go get their mail. If there's nowhere for us to place these people that are homeless in our community, we should be able to provide them somewhere where they can get their mail. I know that there's computers at the library for free because I've been going over there using them because it's such a nice library. So, next time I see him, I will refer him to that, but I didn't know what to tell him as far as him getting mail. And I think that's a simple solution, if we could have boxes where they could go once or twice a week and get their mail, we should make that happen. I'm John Ranting. I thank you for listening, and I am so glad that you're here asking our opinion about what's happening in our community. It's imperative that when we talk about it, we do have action afterwards.
Can I ask a quick question?
Thank you.
Just for clarification purposes, because I'm trying to make sure I get all of your information, but one of the issues seems to be oversight responsibility for the nonprofit agencies that serve the disabled community. Is that one of your major concerns, that there is not that oversight responsibility?
Yes, because basically, whoever's overseeing the nonprofit, as the executive director or the CEO, they have a board of directors, but the board of directors has, they'll say, "We don't micromanage the CEO," because I took every step necessary that I could as an employee to try to get something done that I know was not right. And I don't have a job there anymore. Okay? So, for me to be concerned about my clients, and now I was there 12 years without any kind of negative action, write-ups, or anything, I'm no longer employed there. Now, because I'm an advocate. I'm one of the biggest female advocates in this community, and I have been, and I'm not going to stay somewhere when our mission statement says empowering women, eliminating racism, and you're doing the exact opposite.
So, for those nonprofit entities that receive, I guess, city funding, in particular to assist the disabled community, are you suggesting maybe site visits, things like that?
Well, we have site visits, but it's very easy to, it's very easy to have that person that's overseeing, walking you around, making sure that everything goes the way she wants it, or he wants it to go on the site visits. It's imperative that the clients and the staff are allowed to communicate freely without any retribution.
To city staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have nobody, I asked from day one, I think my first year in, I said, "Could we have a board member representative that is assigned to just checking on us as employees to see how we feel things are going?" Because when you're working with clients that have severe mental illness and a substance abuse issue, that in itself is enough to really, and I know everyone's aware of the epidemic, if you're not doing the things that you're telling, it's like telling a child, "When you get home from school, I'm going to take you to McDonald's," and when they come home, you say, "I'm sorry, I spent all of the McDonald's money at the gambling place." You don't get to do that, and you don't get to tell the clients, "I'm providing a service for you, well, we were, but we spent that money somewhere else instead." It doesn't get to happen like that. But when there's nobody that's making or taking the initiative to find those things out, or if you have family members saying, "Look, I've tried everywhere, there's nowhere I feel my brother's safe to go," and she called me and asked me, and I said, "We need to come." You don't know how to fix something that you don't know is broken as a city. You don't know that unless somebody steps up and says, and a lot of people are afraid to say, "I'm not one of those people, though. I just have always been an advocate and I'll continue to be an advocate." And I think that the city could probably have a person, employee, that does that, that knows the system and can make sure that those things are being done. I really feel strongly about the prison ministry and the people that come out and don't have those things in place, that we set up roadblocks for them, you know? And if we had somebody that advocated for them and that helped them through those services, we had a great success rate because we did it for so long.
Ms. O'Leary, thank you so much. We appreciate very much your passion and commitment to this, and I want to make sure that we are able to get to others in the room as well.
I'll sit down now. Thank you.
Yeah, but thank you very much for your comments.
You're very welcome. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the clarification. There may be time at the end for additional comments. Thank you, Chair.
And the floor is truly open. We do want to hear your comments. We value them and hope that you will come forward and speak up.
I'm Executive Director with the Adaptable Center for Independent Living. We are an advocacy organization for individuals with disabilities. We work with all disabilities, all ages, as advocates. And apologize for coming in late. Part of it, some of the traffic issues with downtown and the parking, and as far as accessibility getting in this building is a little challenging. I've shared that with Wanda before, coming through those doors and down the sidewalk. Using my power chair is a little easier this time, but at our center, the things that we hear about as far as accessibility within the city that are some concerns is, and you guys know this, affordable and accessible housing. We get, we'd answer more calls on that topic than anything in our office. We had a call today, and there was a gentleman who's been waiting, and he's waiting, he's on every waiting list he can find for housing, but it's just not available. It's not affordable. When you have a limited income of less than $800 a month, you can't have, you can't pay market-based rental. The subsidies just aren't there anymore. So, I know, I see the articles in the paper, I know that things are being addressed to try to make housing more affordable, but it's a huge challenge. Another issue is the transportation. A lot of the bus stops are not ADA compliant. Another one near my house, for instance, if I needed to take the bus, I couldn't get to that bus stop. There's not a curb cut, there's not a place to, for the ramp to come down to get on and off the bus. So, those are issues. Sidewalks are a big issue, sidewalks to nowhere, especially when you have the apartment complex or a building that builds and they have to include the sidewalk with their property, but then it goes to an empty lot or a vacant lot or an older place, and then the sidewalk just stops. That's happened with a couple of housing developments over on the north side of town. Those are the main issues that we're seeing and hearing about at our center. I don't think if I'm forgetting anything. But anyway, those are the major ones. If I think of something else, I'll let you know. Bring them back.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Just for clarification, Mr. Steele, you stated that on the bus ramp, I mean, on the bus, that there are no bus ramps, or how did you?
The bus stops.
Bus stops, okay.
The bus stop that's closest to my home, forgive me if I don't know the bus route number off the top of my head, corner of Fair Lawn and Renolda, that it is not accessible. There's not a, it's a small, little grassy patch there, there's a pure service station, and that's where the bus stops. And trying to get to that, there's not a sidewalk or access to get to the bus.
Okay, thank you.
People just stand in the grass, and you got to get up on the curb to get to the stop.
Okay. I don't know if I'm out of order, Chairwoman, but I do know we have somebody here from Winston, Tequila. Do you want to address that? Come on up here. I'm not out of order. I know she was trying to hide, but, you know, for those that who actually, you know, catch that bus on a normal basis, it could be recorded.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Tequila Austin, I work with the Winston-Salem Transit Authority. I'm actually the ADA Administrator for the authority. So, Mr. Steele is actually speaking of Route 109.
Okay.
That bus does travel near Renolda and Fair Lawn, so that's the bus he's speaking about. If I'm not mistaken, we're to contact, or have our customers to contact city council to, well, not city council, I'm sorry, the city to get with sidewalks and pedestrian crossings in order to resolve those issues. I know we're responsible for some areas regarding padding for bus shelters and things of that nature, but I don't think there's a shelter, if I'm not mistaken, in that area.
Okay.
It's just actual bus stop.
Welcome.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lee, I have taken a note. I will get with the Assistant City Manager for Public Works to relay this concern. We are looking at curb cuts and enhancing the sidewalks. As I mentioned earlier, we do have our ADA survey and complaint form online, and so I haven't received a lot of... I guess, complaints, but the number one complaint that I have received relates to curb cuts. So we are looking at that, and we'll be having a meeting soon to kind of address that issue. But we are aware that curb cuts is an issue.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Tequila.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
And while we're waiting for additional comments, I would like to mention that Councilmember John Larson is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sure he's taking notes as well.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I'm Cindy Arrington. I'm the Executive Director of the North Carolina Statewide Independent Living Council. We're a federally mandated nonprofit. Our purpose and mission is to promote independent living for people with disabilities throughout the entire state of North Carolina. And I work very closely with Mr. Steele here. We work with all the eight centers for independent living better throughout the entire state. Their philosophy is the independent living movement. It has to do with choice, consumer choice and control. It has to do with advocacy, peer support, and it's about getting their voice out there. And so I'm very delighted that we're here tonight and able to express the issues and areas that need to be improved in our community because it does help for us to work together in this process. Recently, we had a community conversations meeting at our new beautiful library. And I did announce this forum, by the way. We did let them know that this was happening. We had about 70 people in attendance. And this meeting was to get input and the voices of the people with disabilities here in Winston-Salem and the surrounding area, so that we can find out what do we need to do to write our next state plan for independent living, because that is what I'm also responsible for doing. So we did get a lot of feedback. We got a lot of good information. Like Mr. Steele said, it's mostly about housing, transportation, healthcare, assistive technology, the things that we keep hearing over and over. But we are going to be developing this plan very soon, and it will be going into effect for three years, beginning October 1st, 2019. We are currently in the second year of our three-year state plan for the state of North Carolina. And we're in the process of addressing issues that were brought up three years ago. So, but it's great to be here, and thank you so much for this opportunity. And I think these forums should continue.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington.
Madam Chair, can I ask Ms. Arrington a question, if I may, about accessible housing? Ms. Arrington? Is there anything that, from the forum, that you can share with us in terms of what the city might be able to do with respect to affordable and accessible housing? Is there anything that you can think of that was mentioned that might relate to something the city can perhaps do, tackle, or look at?
I think it would be very helpful. Obviously, the Adaptable Center for Independent Living, they work with a lot of people with disabilities who have major housing issues. And I think affordable, accessible housing is a huge issue. Unfortunately, the apartments, there's just not enough. There's a large waiting list with the target housing. Is that what you're, the target housing is, for low income, is who they work very closely with and are continually getting new people every day calling needing housing, and there's just no place. So they have to put them on a waiting list. So that is a huge issue, is where are we going to make a way, you know? And so, Mark, do you have anything else you want to add?
Do you all work with landlords, property owners? I mean, how does that work in terms of trying to entice folks to provide affordable housing? I'm just trying to figure out how the city might be able to partner with, with different groups in that effort.
As far as what the city can do, it's a good question. I mean, other than applying for federal HUD money, et cetera, when it becomes available, that's hard, I mean, that's not very often anymore. It used to be a lot more. And so I think being aware of federal grants and stuff that are available, sometimes those grants are restricted to municipalities, you know, and so it would have to be the city. We try to keep up with that as much as possible for ourselves, to see if there's anything available that we could offer. But yeah, we, Cindy mentioned the targeted housing units, and that, that's a program through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency where developers entering into agreement with them to set aside 10% of their apartments for subsidized housing and accessible housing. But those are just hit and miss around the state where they are developed. And we do work with, one-on-one with landlords when, when possible, and working to negotiate for individuals for lower rent, but that's not very successful. It's, it's a big issue, and it's a big concern. And bringing to your attention, I don't know the answers. I really don't.
So I guess maybe as the city looks at the issue of affordability and where we provide financing, maybe we should also look at affordable, accessible housing in that context. Okay.
And affordable is a relative term.
I understand.
You know, so lots of the individuals that we work with are on the very low income, surviving on Social Security, SSI, like $800 or less a month.
Okay.
And so that is, that's not affordable in many places. And some of the ones that are available are not very desirable. And then, then we hear about maybe Crystal Towers, that, you know, shutting down, and how that's gonna impact individuals that we work with, too.
And I know the city has been, or had been working on what was called the AFFH. And actually, it was a federal requirement that the city get together and address barriers to fair housing. And so this is certainly a fair housing issue as well, because accessibility, as you know, would be protected under fair housing law, under one of the seven protected classes, which is, one of which is disability. And so definitely, I just wanted to make everyone understand and aware of the fact that we do have fair housing law protections. And so if there are people who have disabilities, who are facing some unique challenges, so to speak, when they're trying to rent, or even during the course of their tenancy, that they need to definitely make us aware, anybody on the Human Relations Commission, or on staff at the Human Relations Department, because Adolfo Brucino and Jelani Biggs, seated right over there, are fair housing investigators. And so that is what they do. And so definitely, if, if there's some type of barrier that is going on between a landlord and a tenant, and the tenant feels as though they are not being provided with equal access to housing, or if they're making reasonable accommodation requests, or reasonable modification requests, then we would like to know that, too, particularly if they are getting pushed back. And I didn't know if Jelani or Adolfo may want to jump in on that. Do you all want to add anything? Okay. Thank you, Adolfo.
President Commissioners and Councilor, and Councilmember Larson, we have some, something like eight fair housing discrimination complaints so far this year, and more than half of them are based on disability. Disability is the driving, the number one driving cause for fair housing complaints. The other thing I would like to point out is that in general, when it comes to structural modifications to the house, in general, the law, the Fair Housing Act says that the persons with a disability are supposed to pay for the modifications. And that's something a lot of people don't understand, don't know, and clearly just believe is very unfair. But that is what the law says. The last thing I will say is that also those modifications that are done, paid by the tenant with a disability, stay in the house. And the tenant, when they leave, cannot ask the landlord to return that money. I just had last week a case, they were Hispanics, by the way. They wanted to file a complaint against the landlord because the landlord would not return the $6,000 they spent on a ramp that they built five years ago. And I told them that that's, that's not possible, and they could not believe it. That was what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. May I ask a question of Mr. Steele and Ms. Arrington, as a follow-up to your comments about the community conversation event that took place recently? We're hoping to get more robust attendance at these events and really want to hear public opinion and voices as part of this conversation. Do you have suggestions on how we might get greater attendance?
I, go ahead. I would say different locations.
Yes.
Go to the people.
Okay.
Go out to, you know, have these meetings in, you know, some of the rec centers.
Maybe some of the local libraries.
Across 52, and, you know, just to get out, make it easier for the people. You go to the people instead of making them, having to come to you.
Yeah, that would help. That would help. And maybe have it at a different time of the day, during the day, maybe? Earlier in the day would probably be a good idea as well.
I would suggest that we look at having a, a meeting like this at the dialysis centers between the morning shift and the afternoon shift. Seems to be an abundant number of folks there.
You would have a captured audience. You really would. That's good. I would like to follow up with the home modification that you just, just brought up. I want to make sure that you all are aware of the North Carolina Vocational Rehab Independent Living Program for people with disabilities who have very limited resources. They do base it on financial need. They can do home modifications in apartments, homes, wherever. And of course, the Adaptable Center for Independent Living, they also are available to help find resources for home modifications. So we want to make sure y'all know all of that good stuff. Because like I say, we're here to work together.
Absolutely.
And I would, as far as the community conversation, I mean, Cindy worked hard on that and getting the word out. And she sent individual letters and emails to groups, and, and food was available. And I think that helped.
Yes.
Feed them, and they will come, and they did.
Did you see that hall full of food out there?
But the way I think I got such a great group there is I contacted community agencies who serve people with disabilities. And at the same time, when I did, I thought, since we're having these agencies here, why not have a community resource fair? So we did. So I asked the agencies to bring their information, to share with the participants of the forum, and it was very successful. So, and I also did send individual emails instead of mass emails. And I called a lot of the people as well. And I really think that's how I, I was able to get such a nice turnout.
Thank you. Very helpful. Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Lawson Jackson, and I'm here on behalf of the Winston-Salem Mayor's Council for Persons with Disabilities. Many of you may not be aware that the Mayor's Council has been in existence since 1947. So we are grassroots organization, and we are mainly an advocacy group. We do a lot of information and referral, but I will echo the same reasons. Most of the calls that we get are concerning, first of all, transportation, and that's the, the big issue of difficulty with individuals getting to doctor's appointments and so forth. We also sponsor two events per year. We sponsor an annual barrier awareness day in the spring, where we invite anyone from the community to come and experience having a disability and maybe going back to their workplace to see what it's like, if they might end up in a wheelchair, or have a visual impairment or hearing impairment. Then in the fall, we, we are just getting ready to celebrate with an annual awards luncheon, where we recognize people in the community that have had an impact on services for people with disabilities, or volunteering, or all aspects, employment. We recognize an employer of the year, as well as an employee of the year, if those individuals are nominated.
Thank you, Jeanette. And just to echo with what she said about barrier awareness day and the annual awards luncheon, I know that we had at least one commissioner who participated with barrier awareness day, Commissioner Jeff Bloomfield. And I believe Adolfo did this year as well for my staff, and Jelani. Were you there, Jelani? You weren't? Okay. And then also, and also we'll have a few commissioners attending the awards luncheon. We usually sponsor the awards luncheon annually, so, and we'll have a couple of staff there as well. So they do great work. It's a great sister board to the Human Relations Commission, and so we look, we always look for opportunities to partner.
Thank you. We continue to invite your comments.
My name is Marlene Kuser, and I'm an advocate. A friend of mine was going to come tonight, but he could not make it. He, he's in, he has CP, and he is in, is in a power wheelchair. And the, is the person that takes him in the van, I just talked to her today. She said that she wasn't coming because the van broke down, so she couldn't use it. And she said she needs, not that I'm talking, I'm talking to you, Tequila, but I am. She says, I know, Tequila, it's all right. She said that she needs three days' notice to have trans aid come to pick him up. So unfortunately, they could not come. They do know about the survey also. And I just found out there's gonna be something in the springtime, too, so they'll definitely be here. But, so the thing that I'm gonna be talking about, because I know that transportation is a big issue with, with them, and, and also housing is another big issue, which I know everybody's talking about, but it is. I mean, it really is. And the other thing is I have to ask you, if a person is renting an apartment, they have to pay for any, maybe I misunderstood you, and the, anything to make it accessible? They have to pay for any of the renovations in the apartment?
The modifications.
Really? Really? Okay. I didn't know that. I thought that they had to do it if, whatever, but that's fine, as long as I understand what, you know, what you had said. Okay.
In general, they have to see the specifics.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay. All right. And I think some of the problem about people not coming out, because I know, I got emails from Cindy, and I know I got emails from the Mayor's Council, I mean, and more than one of, you know, from, from them. I think part of the problem is, is the time. It should be probably during the day. I know that people, if they have a support person with them, most of the time, they're gonna be working during the day and not at night. So that, that could be an issue right there.
It may be that instead of having the commission do it, unless we can find a majority of commission members who could do it during the day, that maybe city staff do the next one. We can talk about how to structure the next one. Because I realize you all work.
That sounds great. And I'm sure that some commissioners may try and participate, even if it's during the day.
I think that's it. I talked enough. Thank you.
Yeah, we just had one follow-up question. In terms of transportation, do you think the issue is more of an access to transportation issue, or would you like to expound upon that a little bit more?
I, I'm really just kind of talking for that person. So I'm assuming that it would be, I guess, Mark would probably know better, is, is it's more of an, an access issue for it, or I don't, I'm... more of an access issue for it, or, I don't, I'm, it's, oh God, what's his name?
Matt?
Matt, Matt Potter, Matt Potter, that's, yeah. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, does, it, would it be, I know, that's what she had said, his mother said that some of the bus, I don't think the bus routes go out there. I think that's what she said, she lives in Louisville.
Wow.
Louisville? Louisville? So, yes. That's what she had said. So, yeah, so that's part of it too, I guess, you know? So, yeah, yeah. It just dawned on me what she said. Because it's, you know, I don't have that issue, but I just thought I would, you know, bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, I, I do know that even though that the transit doesn't go out to the county limits, but what about the park bus? What about the park bus?
I'm not sure how that works.
I don't know how park works.
It doesn't do, Ms. Austin? It doesn't go that far? Okay, because I think it does end, I think it does end at seven o'clock PM. Something like that, I think.
And I don't know if Tekeah can answer this tonight or not. Is the three-day notification period, is that pretty much etched in stone? Is there any flexibility with the three days? Sorry.
She might wish it would have been up here.
So I believe Ms. Kuser is talking about the Medicaid contract that we have with the Department of Social Services. It's actually a state law that they require three full business days notification for any medical appointments. So if an individual has a doctor's appointment they need to get to, they have to be notified, again, three full business days. In the event that TransAid is not able to provide the service for that individual, they have to be able to have enough time to contact another provider. And if it's outside of the county, they require five full business days.
Do you, do you know how the park bus works and the concerns, I mean, regards to that?
Well, the park service does not provide, park does not provide a service to Louisville.
Oh, it don't?
It's pretty much like a fixed route service, like the Winston-Salem Transit Authority provides. Outside of it being a regional service, it's pretty much like a fixed route service. So they have the fixed stops, it's not a demand response service like paratransit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, follow-up question. So if a person wanted to come to tonight's session, how much notice would they need to give you?
If they're a paratransit ADA passenger, then they can just call us before 5:00 PM the day before. But if it's a Medicaid, if they're just a Medicaid client with us, then they can only use TransAid for medical appointments.
Since we're talking about transportation, I do have some information that I can share with you all to make sure you know about. Forsyth in Motion, have you all heard about Forsyth in Motion? Okay, the Forsyth County Aging Services Planning Committee meets at Senior Services, they just met last Friday. It's a community partners that you all might want to start going to, because these are all the agencies in this community that serve people with disabilities and seniors. They get together in a collaborative group, it's called Forsyth County Aging Services Planning Committee, and they meet at Senior Services. And I can give you more details as far as all that. And a subcommittee of Forsyth County Aging Services Planning Committee is Forsyth in Motion. Forsyth in Motion is the transportation subcommittee. They are totally focused on transportation needs for people with disabilities and seniors in this community. I actually serve on that transportation committee and used to chair it several years ago. So what they're looking at is not only TransAid, but the fixed bus, the Shepherd Center that does volunteer transportation for seniors who need to go to the doctor, for example. They're looking at all transportation initiatives in this community. Accessible transportation, you name it, all the resources, they are the ones. And it's Forsyth in Motion, their next meeting is this Thursday at 3:00 at the Shepherd Center. Sam Matthews, who's Executive Director of the Shepherd Center, is leading Forsyth in Motion. And I'm glad it's back in motion. Because it had been kind of, they're just now getting it started again after about a year of not meeting, so they're starting back, so that's real exciting. Because there's a lot of federal funding, just to let you know, that have been brought to Forsyth County. When I chaired the committee, I was able to find, through the Department of Transportation, job access, reverse commute, and new freedom funding. And as a result, this community has benefited quite a bit from those federal funds for transportation for people with disabilities in this community. I'm also going to be serving, by the way, on the State Department of Transportation Initiative Plan for the State 2050. It's a federal 2050 plan, state plan, that I actually have a meeting this coming Monday in Raleigh to serve on that. So certainly I'm very in tune to transportation needs, not only in this community, but certainly globally, you might say. All right, does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So is it really an issue of accessibility? What exactly is the transportation need, and how do you see the city perhaps helping satisfy that need or issue?
Well, I think that the growing number of people with disabilities is obviously growing, and so the need continues to be there, especially with seniors who need to, for example, go to the doctor. And maybe they don't use TransAid, or maybe they don't use a fixed bus, so they're having to use churches and volunteers in the community to help them get there, for example. There are lots of facets, and it's quite in-depth. And Forsyth in Motion, if you want to know about transportation in our community, they are phenomenal as far as the resources, the issues, and it's really a lot of advocates that are together addressing what is happening, what are we, what are we needing to focus on? So they're just now really, like I said, getting started again in meeting and addressing the needs, and that's where the, their vote, you know, everything's being voiced. And this Thursday's their next meeting that they'll be talking about the plans and what we're going to do from here forward. Okay, yes, for transportation. All right. Have you all heard of Here to There Van Service?
Yeah.
Shall I share the story? All right. Okay, Here to There Van Service is a private provider of two ladies who actually came in the office one day years ago and said they wanted to start a transportation business for this community because they noticed when they visited their mothers that all these little seniors wanted to go out too. So I told them, Wanda and Glenda, if you will, there's an unmet need in our community for accessible transportation for people who need, you know, who use wheelchairs for mobility. If you will buy a van that is accessible, your wheels will never stop turning. And 10 years later, their wheels are turning, and their vans are numerous, and they are providing amazing transportation support in this community. They celebrated their 10-year anniversary last November, and I was able to go and join in on the celebration. So there are good things happening out there.
So do you think we need more private providers to help satisfy that need?
Probably expanding the private providers, especially for those who can't utilize TransAid or can't utilize the fixed bus. That would be great to have additional accessible transportation available for a lower cost, that's right, yes. And certainly I'll be listening out for any federal funding that might, we might benefit from, from a state level.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. Are there any additional comments?
Chairwoman, I chip in with a story, and I promised to speak briefly. There's some fine things that are happening, and that's wonderful, but I will share a story that my family, a family member, we did use, utilize Here to There a great deal. Because, and I do have deep concerns about the time requirements, and I understand within reason that TransAid requires for transportation. But when my mother decided to go to make the move to hospice, which was sudden, and when you call and the hospice says she has to be here by 4:00, and it's at noon, and you call TransAid and the response is, we need three days. And then you call the local provider, and the fee is $75. And I understand they're in business, and it's not a charity, and that's fine, but there's got to be some middle ground in that for somebody's final ride of life. And that is deeply, deeply concerning to me. And it's not a story, I mean, that's a fact of life. And there's got to be some middle ground, and there's got to be a solution in there, and it's, there are people who don't go because they can't. There are people who don't go to the doctor because you say, well, I'm sick and I'm choking now because I know fluid's building up. Well, we can get you to the doctor in three days. And not to be overly dramatic, they may be dead in three days. And they don't have the $75 to pay to go. And I, and just some concerns that I've taken, which I'll throw out there, that I think as a, as a group, we need to take a long, hard look at, are there timely responses? And don't get me wrong, before our family was faced with the fact of a family member who can no longer walk, and that involves a wheelchair, and that involves a power chair, I didn't know what TransAid existed, and certainly didn't know the services that they provide, for which we were grateful, grateful. But sometimes there are mistakes made, things don't work out, and when you reach out for a timely response, it does not, is not always forthcoming, which is disappointing. And you almost get to a place of you feel dismissed, which we don't want anyone to be in that place, that that is concerning. In terms of the curb cuts, shelters, things like that, and I appreciate the need for, we have online surveys, we have forms that can be filled out, everyone does not have access online, and everyone's not going to fill out a form. And I wish there were a greater ease, if it's a phone call, somebody could call and very simply say, this is a problem, this is what I saw.
That's my number. 747-7404.
But I, and that's great, but I don't know that somebody who's frustrated standing out in the cold knows the number. Also, information that's passed on from social workers at medical facilities, from social workers at long-term care facilities, at dialysis centers, you get one explanation here, you get a totally different explanation here, you make a phone call, you get a third explanation. If we could establish some sort of online clearinghouse, if that's a publication hard copy that the city regularly updates, if that can be an online, if that can be any kind, if there can be an app that's developed where the information is not outdated, which is current and relevant, and truly, that's a full-time thing, because I realize there are always tweaks and adjustments and policies put in place, but we can't, six months later, then help me in the moment. And I've mentioned this before, institutions, organizations, facilities that are privately owned, and I realize there's probably little that can happen, but can the city reach out to say, we have a concern as a community, can you make that change? I'm uncomfortable having that conversation. I'm quite certain there are some people in the world that are a little more grown up than me that will have that conversation. And, you know, that's, because we've all been to Haynes Mall. It's a kick in the rear end to drive somebody through Haynes Mall in a wheelchair. That's hard. And I've lived that too. That, and again, with the community conversations, I think those are easily done, and let's go where, where some people may be uncomfortable, where it may not be bright lights and everything clean, and I, those are, I'll yield.
Thank you for your comment. Great comments, appreciate it.
Just in reference to your point about getting misinformation from one point to another, the state of North Carolina is trying to address that through an individual that needs assistance with long-term services and supports through the 211. Are you familiar with that? And you just dial 211. And they are working to build a database in all communities of resources, so you tell the caller or the receptions on the other end what issues you're having, and they're supposed to be able to pull up and provide resources to you. Now, it's only, the information they give you is only as good as what they've got on their end, but we at the Adaptables, another organization, are trying to work with them to make sure they have current information on resources available. But that's something that the state of North Carolina is trying to have statewide as a resource for people looking for, that need resources, 211.
Didn't we at one time have something similar to that, a first-line?
And that's still available through senior services? They still operate first line at senior services?
I actually ran across a old one just recently, and just, I kept it and just prused through it to see the vast resources that it entailed for the city. It was a wonderful, wonderful resource tool.
They still produce those books, and it's also on their website. You can find resources on their website. It's a good place to go, it's fairly reliable also.
Thank you, I do that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele, and thank you, Commissioner Griffin. That was a very important and personal perspective that I'm glad that we heard today. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may, for those who don't have access to the internet, there are two numbers that they can dial. Of course, my number, Angela Carmen, 747-7404, and then Al Andrews, who's also one of the city's ADA coordinators, who's actually here tonight as well, 747-7401. So there are two numbers.
Thank you, City Attorney Carmen.
And also, Madam Chair, if I'm not mistaken, City Attorney Carmen, if someone calls CityLink, they will put them through to you as well. If they can't remember the numbers or whatever, they can call CityLink. CityLink, 311.
At this point, I'd like to invite any of the commissioners to share their perspectives as well. Any thoughts?
I like to say that I am excited that we are continuing these conversations. The information that is being shared is eye-opening when Commissioner Griffin talks about transportation and the gathering at the dialysis centers. I used to work in dialysis, and so understanding that the time delay between appointments can be tedious, and sometimes there are emergencies, and so that is a process that we have to continue to look at and to continue to make sure that there is access in the community for all of our citizens. And it's very important that we do that. I'm thinking of having my mother to transition here from Louisiana, and so being inundated in the community and making sure that those access, those resources are accessible for her as well. So it's not just, you know, it's a concern, not when it just lands at your door, but it's a concern for others. And so, you know, sometime we respond differently when it affects us personally, but we should just make sure that we're looking out and being good citizens and good neighbors of everyone that is in this community. And so I'm excited that we're doing this, and I look forward to making sure that we're at a venue that is accessible for everyone, so that we can hear the concerns and address, so that we can move forward as a community. So again, thank you all for allowing us to hear this this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins.
And just as a follow-up, we will have at least one more session during this fiscal year, at least for our city government, our fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, 2019. But in the spring, we are anticipating holding another ADA public hearing, whether it will be with you all, or whether, as City Attorney Carmen said, whether it will, it'll be with another group. And of course, I'm sure we'll be flexible with looking at sites and looking at the different timeframes for which we can hold the public hearing.
Thank you.
I would say that tonight's meeting was very eye-opening. Of course, I attended the last meeting, what we had at the fairgrounds, was that three months ago or something? But I do want to say that, you know, I have seen the challenges as well with the disabled in my own community, Easton, within the bus system itself. But I, you know, one thing that what Ms. Austin did stated, which was very preview to all of us and those ones who are watching tonight, is that it starts from the top, you know, that there is a gap within- know, that there is a gap within Medicaid and some of the insurance companies itself. I do believe that if Worcester could, they, they would accommodate the individuals that who needed to come out to the meetings or go out to their doctor's appointments and et cetera. But I do want to make that statement, I don't want to want to feel like the ones who are, who may be watching tonight, that if Winston Transit, Winston-Salem Transit, I'm sorry, does not care about the participants that who are riding the bus, and that's not the case that we're trying to say. What we're trying to say is that we have to be aware of where things start at, and sometimes it does start at the top. And so, that means that we have to get on the phone, and we have to work together, as Commissioner Wiggins said, as well Commissioner Jeffrey stated as well, to push your button, to let them know that there are individuals that who are suffering, somebody that who may have pneumonia today, and they can't get to the doctor until next Monday, only because of that they're, they are depending on Medicaid to pay for them to get on the bus. And I know that sometimes we may say that, well, it only costs 50 cents, but you know, you don't know people's situations, you know? They could be scraping at 50 cents to hold it to, you know, for their next meal. And so, I think that the conversations tonight, as well from the last meeting that we had, Ms. Attorney Carmen, as well Attorney Andrews, I think there has been very successful dialogue, even though we're few and gather, but still we're able to hear dialogue from you guys at what matters here in the city. My last thing I was going to make was, I think I lost my thought, but, it went out quick. Okay, that's all I can say right now, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Yes, there's one more question or comment.
More of an observation, Samuel Gaverne, again, from the Homeless Caucus. I just want, I just noticed something, that a lot of these buildings, they have the elevators for, for people who have mobility issues, and that's great. But unfortunately, they don't have ramps, regular ramps, and, and this is, I feel that a lot of architects, they need to design secondary provisions so that, you know, during a power failure or maintenance issues, that people with wheelchairs are able to get to upper levels of buildings rather than, you know, I'm sorry, sir, the elevator is out, there's nothing we can do for you. And, and I was just wanting to point that out, because I, my, both my mother and my father, before their passings, they had, they had mobility devices, and it was very difficult for them to get to certain places if an elevator was out of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaverne. We're coming close to the end of our time here together, but we want you to know that your comments and feedback and sharings here this evening are greatly valued, and we look forward to continuing the conversation in different spaces around the city, and encourage you to reach out to the Human Relations Department, the commission, with any additional ideas and feedback. We are here as a resource. And at this point, I would like to ask for a motion from any of the commissioners to move to close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, the meeting is closed.